I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the presentation of colors and the flag? Tonight's presented by Owen High School and the instructors by Colonel McConney.
March. Code. Hold. Flag. Face. Freezing. Code.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Charlie. Right. Face. Forward. March.
I ask you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with one change. We're going to move Policy 6341 from its place on the existing agenda to information agenda for first reading. Could I get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda. Would that change?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It is time for our superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by recognizing several key staff members that participated in this afternoon's Capitol Outlay and Operational Budget Presentation Work Session to our board. I think everyone would agree that we had a very successful presentation and lots of information to take home with us. First, a thank you to the Capitol Outlay Committee that's made up of representative principals, and I'm looking around, we had four principals on that committee. I don't see any of them, and I don't believe if, I don't think we had any one of the four here.
Home resting, I think.
Oh, they're at home resting after the Capitol. That's, that's exactly right. But they did a great job, so they deserve that rest. But I also want to recognize Mr. Joe Huff, Mr. Tim Fairley, Mary Beth Kingston, and Mr. Clark Wyatt, because they were key, key leadership players on that particular team for Capitol Outlay. And our new Capitol Outlay facilitator, and she's not here with us, but we do want to recognize her, Amelia Buckner. This was her first year working with that process, and she just did, Amanda Buckner. What did I call her?
Amelia.
Amelia. Amanda Buckner. I'll pay for that tomorrow, I know. This particular group actually looked at each of 562 requests that came from all of our individual schools, and we have 44 of those. And out of those 562 requests, they approved 178. I just truly believe that that continues to be such a model process of collaborative planning. And once again, good job meeting and the challenge of taking $42 million worth of requests. That's a lot of requests and a lot of money, but it prioritized, that particular team worked hard to prioritize it down to $11.9 million of available budget. So, good job. The board also was presented with a very detailed facility needs report. We do this every year, and that contained a considerable amount of data. Thanks again to Mr. Fairley and Ms. Kingston for their dedicated efforts. They researched and provided all this information in a very efficient manner to us. Also, I've got to recognize Deborah Frisby, our Chief Finance Officer, for her hard work and expertise. Maybe that's vice versa, expertise then hard work in preparing the projected $255.5 million operating budget for 2017, 2018. And as always, she does an outstanding job, and again, that's a lot of, a lot of dollar figures to make sure everything adds up and we meet the needs of our school system. Safety preparedness in our school continues to remain the highest of priorities. And last week, Johnston Elementary School, I don't see Principal Hips, I'm looking around, but Johnston participated in a full-scale evacuation and parent reunification drill. And I want to recognize our Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services, Mr. Joe Huff. His leadership in planning that drill and facilitating that session was outstanding. In all components, we are trained under the National Incident Management System, which is the gold card for emergency management. And so, all of those components were in place and very successful in that particular drill. We also want to thank UNC Asheville and David Weldon. Mr. Weldon is the Director for Emergency Management there at UNC Asheville, because they provided the Sherrill Center as a host site for that reunification. And I know, again, Principal Hips would be extremely proud, was extremely proud of all of her students and staff for their participation. Their behavior was just excellent. And while we hope that circumstances never take us down that road to prompt such a response, crisis response, I believe that all of us and certainly our Buncombe County School parents can take comfort in the fact that we are prepared as a school system in that particular, if that event were to happen. We still have one day left in National Teacher Appreciation Week, so I see a number of students out there, so make sure you tell your teachers, "Thank you tomorrow." We got one day left. And I want to close out by asking Mrs. Swanger. She represented our central office this morning at TC Robertson High School. We had the annual Special Olympics, and that's always such a wonderful event, so can you close this out and tell us a little bit about how that went?
Certainly. And I see Ms. Greenhoe from TC Robertson. Thank you again for hosting our special athletes. We had over 500 Buncombe County special athletes having a wonderful day. The wind just about blew everybody away, but the sun was shining, and every student got to participate in activities to their level. Every student was recognized. We had county commissioners there, Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, APD. Every student had a volunteer and a peer mentor with them, and they had the most fantastic day. So, how fortunate we are to live in such a community where all students feel special.
Good. At this time, Ms. Harris, and good news.
Good evening, Board members. Today, we have several items of good news. First up, could Ms. Tanya Robinson come forward? She's going to recognize Coach Jennifer Crook for being the North Carolina State Coach of the Year for Fast Pitch Softball.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and audience participants. I have the distinct honor tonight to recognize one of the best of the best, Ms. Jennifer Crook. So, if you'd just go ahead and come on up, Coach Crook, we appreciate that. You can come right here with me, because I'm going to get you to say something, too. Coach Crook is unique in her coaching, and she's going to laugh, well, I hope you love me after this, Jennifer, because it's not just about the wins and the losses, although they will all tell you that I don't truly believe that, that I really do like the wins, and I got to tell you, I'm very competitive, so I do. And that's the reality of it. But what Coach Crook does is she coaches the student and the child. And it's more than about what they do on that softball field, it's more than what they do there, that she gets to these young women. And their success, their continued success for all these years, and she's had girls come and go, and through all of these years, their continued success starts right here with this coach. And I could tell a story from this year where she has taken on a young lady that I'm going to tell you, most coaches might go, huh, probably not a good idea. And even the principal said, hmm, probably not a good idea. And she has already found a place in this young lady's heart, so that it has become a success story. And by the way, I hope to stand, I'm not going to even jinx this, Coach Crook, I won't. Just keep reading the papers about Sugar Jets. Thank you, Coach Crook, for being the 2016 State Coach of the Year in Girls Softball. She doesn't want to speak. Oh, we going to take pictures?
Jennifer, you're not even going to say, "Go, Sugar Jets"?
I don't have to. Everyone knows that. I know me.
And that's not all we have to offer in the INCA District, because we also have on staff
another coach that I really can't say enough about. Everything that I said about Coach Crook, you can just hear it again, because this is in our wrestling coach, Mark Harris. Coach Harris? Again, a successful program, and I really didn't know a ton about wrestling in my personal life. My kids were not wrestlers. They played the other sports, but I'm telling you, he will tell you, he has pictures of me that better never, ever get out. At wrestling tournaments, where I'm going crazy, y'all. I mean, it is the most intense sport I have ever been involved in. And those young men work so hard, and they are so good at what they do, because, you're hiding.
Well, he told me to stand here.
Oh, sorry.
There's a big thing here. Can I?
There's a big thing?
Yeah.
They are so good at what they do because of the coach's dedication and what he does for these young men. Again, it's not about the W's and the L's, but it's about what he does with their character, with who they are as individuals, and it's just a well-deserved honor that Mark Harris was named the 2016-17 Wrestling Coach of the Year, North Carolina Wrestling Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. Harris. He's going to speak.
I had to come here on Wednesday for mandatory training in the minitorium, and I can say this is a lot better, getting an award, than going to, going to a workshop. But I would like to point out that perhaps it's not Jennifer and I who deserve all the credit tonight, but we work in a pretty wonderful school for a pretty amazing principal and administrative team. And we also get to do what we love to do in a pretty awesome system in counties. So, thank you to everybody for just letting us do what we do, and I think I'm going to keep doing it if you'll have me.
Absolutely.
Okay.
He's been named the NCAA Assistant Principal of the Year. He's an AP at Owen High School. Would Chad Upton and Meg Turner come down now to talk a little bit about Mr. Lewis?
We're going to ask Mr. Lewis to come on up as well. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. Now, I'm 6'7", so I'm going to have to get this up a little bit here, so. Again, my name's Chad Upton, principal at Lester Elementary School, and on behalf of the NCAA Division of Administrators, I am pleased and honored to announce that Jim Lewis is the 2017 NCAA Division of Administrators Assistant Principal of the Year. Like many other professionals, assistant principals are often the unsung heroes that continue to build schools and allow for many of the programs that we offer to continue to thrive. Working in areas such as transportation and fleet management, state and local testing and accountability, discipline, scheduling, hiring, and facility management are just some of the areas where they often work without very much notoriety. Mr. Lewis has consistently demonstrated his leadership through a number of other uncommon examples, including collaboration with media specialists, literacy coaches, digital and learning facilitators and others, to develop what has become Owen High School's literacy, instruction, and technology team, with the goal of improving instruction through the use of integrated technology within the context of literacy instruction. In addition, Mr. Lewis is the first assistant principal to participate as a member of the LEA-wide Media and Technology Advisory Council, with the mission of completing the BCS One-to-One Technology Initiative within the next few years, as well as further move along our system in decisions within this area. In addition to his work in technology and literacy, Mr. Lewis has served as an advocate for educators' work by speaking to local Rotary Club and authoring an address of the state of the school at Owen High School, while highlighting the important and progressive techniques that we continue to develop in Buncombe County Schools. And finally, and most importantly, Mr. Lewis is not just a solid example for all administrators and educators, he is someone that the students of Owen High School can look up to as a role model for his hard work and dedication, and it pays off in ways that go beyond accolade and financial compensation. In a time when our greatest need in society are the best people making real impacts, Jim Lewis has excelled at both, an educator and as a person. Again, it is my honor to present him this award that he so rightfully deserves. Jim Lewis is the 2017 Assistant Principal of the Year in North Carolina.
Are you really 6'7"?
Yes, ma'am.
That's tall. I want you to wipe your mind clear of Tanya Robinson in a wrestling singlet, because that's still what I have in my mind.
Mr. Lewis is incredible assistant principal. I have known him since, I think, 2001, when I was an assistant principal at Owen High School, and he was a band director. And he knows, it's no secret, I really have no musical talent whatsoever, but I loved his band, I continue to love band at Owen High School, but it was amazing to watch him work and work with our students. And then, I moved away and worked, not moved away, but left Owen and worked at some other schools. When I came back as principal, he and I met, and I just remember the warmth in which he greeted me and welcomed me to Owen, and it was really clear, he was eager and ready to get to work. So, I was pretty excited about that, and he has truly been a great colleague to me. I made some notes on my phone, I'm not reading email. I think it's okay and probably safe here with his wife present, who's also a Buncombe County School educator. She works at Fairview Elementary. I just want to acknowledge Cheryl, because I recognize how much he's not with you, because he's with me when he's not with you. He's probably my work husband. My husband's not in the room, but he can appreciate that. When you spend as much time with a colleague as we spend with each other, and it's true for other administrators, you see them at their high, you see them at their low, and I want you all to know that I don't make a single decision at Owen beyond yes, no, really no, that's stupid, or really yes, hurry up. Those decisions are really quick and really easy. Yes, no, no, that's really stupid, don't do that, and yes, please hurry up. Any decision I make beyond those, I consult with him. He helps me understand when I am out of line, or when I should perhaps take a different course of action, and he also acknowledges and appreciates the work that we do together. So, I just really appreciate his work quite a bit. Other than being a UT fan, I love all parts of him, and I'm going to leave you with a quick story. He came in, I think, Monday, and he said, "Did you really release Drew Fowler from bus duty?" He said you did. And I said, "Yeah, I did, and I'm really sorry I didn't get it covered." He said, "Okay." And he turned around, he walked out. Really, I did release Drew, and I was supposed to get coverage, and I didn't. And it was time for bus duty, right? So, about an hour and a half later, he sent me a text, and he said, "I'm really sorry, I got mad at you earlier." And I read the text, and I kind of scratched my head, and I said, "I don't know if it's a statement about me or you, but I did not recognize you were mad at me. Could you please tell me what happened?" He's calm, even under fire, and when he's mad, it really, he's told me, Cheryl, maybe you can tell me what it's like when he's mad. But I appreciate everything that he does, and it's great to have the honor to recognize him. So, thanks, Mr. Lewis, for all that you do. It's nothing but a pleasure.
Thank you. So, I know board meetings can be long, so I won't, I won't say a whole lot. I do want to say that the things that I've really enjoyed about this experience, Facebook, fount of all knowledge, when this came out, when our Stacia and Communications Department put this out, I had so many former students make comments on there that were really important to me. And then, as people talk to you and they congratulate you, which is all super nice, you know, it's great to be able to reflect and communicate to those people that it's the administrative team at Owen that is so strong and allows me to do the things that I need and want to do, that has allowed this award to take place, starting and ending in a lot of ways with Meg Turner, who, you know, advocated for me to get this award. So, it's been fantastic, and I very much appreciate winning it, but it certainly is a team effort, and appreciate this tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our curriculum feature, Ms. Swanger?
Yes, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. Tonight, you're going to see an example of how important our extracurricular activities are to students. We hear about academics regularly, we have wonderful athletics, but sometimes extracurriculars just make a difference. So, going back to the INCA recognition evening, we have the cast of Hairspray with us tonight, and Ms. Isnaianga takes a leading role in the beautiful thing, Robert Summerall, who is not with us this evening, and Director Susan Stanley Moreno collaborated and produced a wonderful musical. And I know many of you have been involved in musicals in all of the districts, because there's such a multitude of opportunities to see and visit the high schools this theater end of school season. But tonight, we're featuring Hairspray. So, INCA high school students, come on down, and if the board wants to trade seats with you, that would be great.
At this time, it's public comment.
Ms. Madam Chair, we have four people sign up for public comment today. The first is Mary Ann Tierney of Fairview.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Tierney. I hope to have my son attend Fairview Elementary School, yet I am homeschooling him only because of the high levels of microwave radiation in all of our public schools. Twenty-two countries around the world now have protective policies to use technology safely. Joining them are communities in 12 US states, including Maryland's statewide Children's Environmental Health Council, which recommends hardwired connections in all schools. There are now 225 international EMF scientists who have appealed to the UN and the World Health Organization for Protective Standards on Non-Ionizing Radiation. One of these scientists, Dr. Martin Paul, released a new report on Wi-Fi, highlighting at least 45 years' worth of research by our government on non-ionizing radiation. In addition to the cell phone study released last year by the National Toxicology Program... In addition to the cellphone study released last year by the National Toxicology Program, he also highlighted the Office of Naval Medicine Study in '71 and NASA's RAINES Report in '81, all pointing to more than 100 adverse health effects. Dr. Paul writes, "Low-intensity EMFs attack our brain, our health, the integrity of our genomes or DNA, and our ability to produce healthy offspring. Wi-Fi in schools may be a high-level threat to the health of our children, as well as a threat to teachers and any fetuses they may be carrying. Here in Buncombe County, the radiation levels in schools has gone up exponentially due to thousands of new wireless devices. The use of wireless access points, smart boards, laptops, and iPads all leads to higher and higher radiation levels, creating a perfect storm for children who are more vulnerable to all toxins. It is a conflict of interest to rely on technology experts to tell us if microwave radiation is a problem. The FCC, led by the wireless industry's former legal counsel, has safety standards that are now 20 years old. Twenty-first century learners need 21st-century science. Please put children's health... Please put children's safety first. Study this issue using the research of the EMF scientists. In the budget you are about to approve, please utilize the $5 million for technology to hardwire all classrooms. Please instruct teachers, parents, and students on how to use technology safely. I am happy to help you. Please come out next Thursday to the Fairview Library at 7:00 p.m. to learn more. Thank you."
Thank you.
Our remaining three public comment sign-ups are Anthony Mieha, Gilberto Mieha, Gloria Estrada, who will come down and each present together consecutively.[724.79][724.79](MUTTERING VOICES)
For those of you who have known me, my name is...
My name is...
Mahia, and I am a student of Clyde Erwin High School. Today, I come representing the MANOS program, which is an extracurricular activity for Buncombe County schools. And I've been asked to give a personal thank you to the Buncombe County Board of Directors. Recently, Buncombe County has released a statement saying they will assist and support the immigrant community as well as the Hispanic community. Now, to many, this may seem as a small gesture, but to us, who have been a part of this community our entire lives... I personally was born in the United States, though my parents were immigrants. This has highly affected me as I've grown up in the Buncombe County school system. And while there are many imperfections, just as any system, this has given you light to the way you support our community and our families. I personally am a part of two programs, the MANOS program and the Interpreters Club at Clyde Erwin. Both that helped bridge the gap between immigrant students and students who were born in this... Excuse me, who were born in this country. I personally am a member as well as the ROTC program, and as of November 7th, I enlisted in the United States Army. And as of July 25th, I will be leaving Buncombe County in order to complete my training and become a United States soldier. The reason being is the way I was raised, my sense of purpose, and of course, Buncombe County schools. It's because of Buncombe County schools and their continued support for our students that I was able to reach out to recruiter. I was able to attend the MANOS program, the Interpreters Club, and the ROTC program. It is because of Buncombe County that my future is now set, and I have a true opportunity to both serve my country and serve myself. And I thank you for your continued support.[840.44][840.44](MUTTERING VOICES)[841.44][841.44](MUTTERING VOICES)
Hola, buenos... Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gloria. Les quiero agradecer a todos por haber creado este documento. Para mí ha sido muy difícil ya que es... Ya que he vivido en otro país por mucho tiempo y ahora que vine para acá.
My name is Gloria, and I am here to thank for this opportunity. For me, that I come from another country has been very difficult up to now.
En la escuela es difícil porque como no sé mucho inglés y pero esto me ha ayudado. Hay un club en el que se llama Juntos y me ha empleado muchas cosas con las que me he superado cada vez más.
It has been difficult for me because I don't speak enough English, but I belong to a group that is called Juntos, that is at my school, and has helped me a lot.
Hay personas las cuales no les agrada mucho que una persona que viene de otro país hable otro idioma y eso les hace crear problemas.
There are persons that they don't like very much, that they are people from another countries, that they speak a different language, and sometimes that creates problems.
Yo, para mí es muy importante sentirme bien o segura y con este documento que me está brindando seguridad me hace pensar que no estamos solos ni estoy sola. Hay algo que nos respalda y este es un documento muy importante ahora.
For me, it's very important to feel good and feel safe. And with this document you have created, I can feel that I am supported, that somebody... That I am not alone, and somebody is with me.
Gracias por brindarnos este apoyo, interpreters, personal, como Ms. Norma from...
Thank you for giving us these documents and interpreters and staff and personnel like Ms. Ram.
Thank you.[1017.11][1017.11](MUTTERING VOICES)
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
I'm the father of this guy.
I am the father of this guy.
Biggs. So I'm very proud of him, and I really appreciate you here as for today. But with all respect, I will start to speak in Spanish.
Oh.
Sorry.[1036.48][1036.48](LAUGHTER).
Perfectly okay.
Les agradezco profundamente al doctor por todo el apoyo que le ha dado a la escuela de Erwin High School. Por todos los problemas que ha habido o que hubo en el pasado.
I am immensely grateful, and I want to thank Dr. Baldwin for all the support and overcoming all the problems that we went through in the past.
Y les agradezco por el apoyo que le están brindando ahora a la comunidad, a la comunidad latina de los estudiantes latinos.
For all the support that you are bringing to the Latino community and the students.
Y por agradecerles por el documento que han aceptado y que tenemos la seguridad de que los estudiantes se sienten seguros en esta escuela.
And I want to thank for this document because that give us this... We are sure now that our students feel safe in the schools.
Les agradezco también por todo el apoyo que nos han dado en las juntas anteriores que hemos tenido.
I want to thank for all the support we had in previous meetings we had at the school.
Y agradecerles y por estarnos escuchando hoy.
Thank you for... Because you are listening to us today.
Y por hacernos sentir más seguros y confiables con ustedes.
And because we feel more safe and we trust you all more.
Y poderles dar ese apoyo a nuestros hijos, así como a este muchacho que pronto se nos va a ir a servir al país.
And this needed support like he had it that soon is leaving us to serve this country.
Gracias.
At this time, we'll move to the action portion of the agenda. The first item is Budget Amendment Number 7. And Ms. Frisbee, wait just a minute, let's see if we have any questions. Do any of the board members have questions about Budget Amendment Number 7? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 7. Thank you. And could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the next item on the agenda is the Approval of Funding Request for the Current Expense and Capital Appropriation and Submission of the 2017-2018 Preliminary Budget to the County Commissioners. Any questions about this item?
We asked lots of questions in the earlier work session.
I was gonna say that after we passed this, yes. All those... Let's see. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Any... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've been in budget work sessions since noon today, and our minds are mush, and I apologize. Mine seems to be mushier than most. But we have asked multiple questions about this budget and spent good time with Ms. Frisbee today. The next item on the action agenda is Avery's Creek Elementary School Cafeteria Renovations and Expansion to Authorize the Award and Award the Contract. Any questions from board members on this one? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Next item on the action agenda, the Administrative Services Building Spot, Replace, and Restore Roof Areas 2, 3, and 5. And to award the contract, any questions from board members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion... Did I just do that? I would entertain a motion to approve. I told you I'm mushy.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item's North Buncombe High School Use of Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment for Locker Room Renovations. Any questions from board members? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could we get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along. Now then, you want to read it? At this time, we have a resolution in support of the Juvenile Misdemeanor Diversion Program. I've asked Dr. Baldwin to read this resolution.
I would like to first thank Mrs. Suzanne Swanger for representing our school system on a special committee that included a number of our local law enforcement and government officials to bring this to the table. Whereas the mission of Buncombe County schools is to collaborate with stakeholders to provide a safe, caring, rigorous, and engaging learning environment that prepares all students to be career and college-ready, and whereas as students grow, learn, and mature, they occasionally make mistakes, and whereas youth under the age of 18 cannot vote, legally drink, enlist in the military, or even get a library card without a parent's signature, and whereas North Carolina is one of only two states in the country that charges 16- and 17-year-olds for misdemeanor crimes in adult criminal court, and whereas adolescents prosecuted in the juvenile justice system are less likely to go on to commit another crime compared to juveniles tried in the adult system, which means lower cost to society and more children growing up to become educated, employed citizens, and whereas Buncombe County students between ages of 16, 17-years-old face criminal citations or arrests for minor misdemeanor offenses such as disorderly conduct, underage drinking, shoplifting, marijuana possession just from August through December, and whereas criminal charges and arrests cause direct negative consequences, including denial of employment, denial of public benefits, denial of financial aid for higher education, loss of housing, loss of professional licensure, deportation, and other hardships, and whereas raising the age of juvenile jurisdiction to 18 will lead to significant long-term financial savings, safer communities, better academic results, and overall, better outcomes for children, and whereas even in cases where the charges are dismissed, there remains the very real and long-term collateral consequences of a public record that could impact a young person's ability to get hired for their first job, college financial aid eligibility, or enlisting in the military, and whereas the Juvenile Misdemeanor Diversion Program was developed in our community to teach participants about consequences of their actions and enable them to enter adulthood without a criminal record, and whereas the Juvenile Misdemeanor Diversion Program enables officers to make an incident report instead of an arrest or criminal citation for nonviolent misdemeanor offenses by 16- and 17-year-olds, and whereas participants are screened and required to attend a court session, an educational program informing them about the consequences of crime, and teaching them responsible decision-making, whereas participants are required to